Ladies and gentlemen, everyone stand for the pledge. At this time, I'd like to ask some of our veterans to come up to the podium. I'd like to thank them. Come right to the podium, gentlemen. Is it just going to be Charlie and Nick or everyone? Everyone? Okay. Gentlemen, first and foremost, I'd like to thank you for your service. Since January of 2016, we made this a priority that every meeting that we have as the Board of Commissioners, that we bring our veterans in to explain, talk about who they are, what they did, and for them to do the pledge. Because we believe it's an honor for you to be here, because if we didn't have our veterans, we would have nothing in our country. So, I would like to thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
Pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay there for one moment. Oh, no, he's going to. I'd like to just have a moment of silence. McHenry County Sheriff's Office, Illinois, Deputy Sheriff Jacob Keltner was shot and killed as he and another member of the Great Lake Regional Fugitive Task Force attempted to serve an arrest warrant in Rockford, Illinois. Also, Colorado State Patrol Colorado, Corporal Dan Groves was struck and killed by a vehicle during a blizzard. Please keep our heroes, and their families, and their friends, and our thoughts and prayers when they go through this tough time. Also, I would just like to bring up, this is a very, very good close, this is a very close friend of ours. He actually came in and did the pledge before. This is retired Lieutenant Colonel Thomas Bracy. And he was a friend of mine for over 30 years. And he had such an interest in life, he was a bombardier who had 20-some missions over Germany during World War II. And he would talk about what it was like to look down through the clouds and say, his worst thing to have to tell the crew was, sometimes they'd have to circle around again. And he said, "I would be looking down to try to find the target any way possible so we wouldn't have to turn the plane around, so we wouldn't put ourselves in harm's way for our second go-around." He also was in the Korean War, Vietnam War, and he was called up for Desert Storm, but his wife said he couldn't. They wanted him to come to Andrews Air, they wanted him to work out of Andrews Air Force Base. He was a great man. He died at age 97, and he was involved in all the parades. Like you said, he's actually, when they showed that he died on 16, he was here doing the pledge, I think about three years ago. He was a wonderful, wonderful man, and just like all of our other veterans that have passed away, you know, please keep all of them in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Okay, let's talk about, now, for those of you in the viewing audience in here today, for those of you in the viewing audience, Jimmy Reddington died at age 19, and he was out of Bull's Head. And I've been going up to his memorial service yearly for the longest, longest time. And these gentlemen here are friends and part of the main group that actually makes this happen, where they started off with like one or two people, and it's, sometimes they get 100-some people at it. It was amazing. And last year, the county had an opportunity to help out and to be there for when they finally got the medals for Lance Corporal Jimmy Reddington. And, you know, on behalf of the county, it was an honor to be there to help out with this situation. It's 52 years, the anniversary. Let's talk about what's going on.
This Saturday will be the 52nd, I don't want to say anniversary, of Jimmy Reddington's death. He was killed March 23rd, 1967. And as important as Jimmy is, there's a particular Marine that was with him the day he was killed. And he'll be coming in here this Saturday also. His name is Joe Silvestri, he lives in the Philadelphia area. And this will be the 25th year that he's come to his grave. And there's Marines from all over the country that were in the same company, which was Third Platoon of Echo 2-5. And I also found out yesterday morning that the city of Scranton, this Saturday at 10:30, is going to dedicate a small area as you enter Western Field to Jimmy Reddington. They have a banner that's hanging there, and they have a plaque that they'll unveil. I guess it would be, the city officials will handle this, and then we'll continue up to his gravesite for 11:15, 11:30, where we'll pay tribute to Jimmy as we always do. And, you know, they said that we all grew up together, we're all friends, and we just don't want him forgotten because he has no family, no immediate family left, anyway. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, you know, he was 19 years old, and the Western Field area was his areas to run around in. And what I thought was really, really incredible was when General Christmas came in, that this committee, through his pictures, figured out that, well, they knew it, but they had a picture of him actually at Bancroft School. And what's funny about Bancroft School, Bancroft School has not changed physically on the inside of that school from when he was there back in the, geez, 19, early 1960s, or whatever it would be. And, like I said, that's his area, so I think it's really good that there's going to be an opportunity for him to be remembered down there. It's going to be great.
Now, I just want to say that we, all three of us here grew up with Jimmy, and he was our hero. He was the hero of the neighborhood. We played baseball with him at the Little League Central City at the time, was at Western Field. And we just had some good times, and, you know, somebody like that with no family and that, we just can't forget him, and we never will. And hopefully, it continues when we're not here no longer. That's about it.
Well, I'll tell you something. I know he might not have family, but friends are your family that you choose. So Jimmy chose well.
Yeah, he did.
He chose well with you guys.
We miss him, and we wonder what he would be like today, you know, like, you know, growing up and, you know, having kids and so on and so forth, and, you know, it's just sad, you know, that he's not here no longer. It's about it.
You keep his memory alive, Commissioner Cummings.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all that you do to keep him in everyone's memories, and thank you for your service, and thank you for being here and helping us to remember him. Great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having us here.
Absolutely.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Just to thank you for all your work in finding the gravesite. It's a tribute to not only him, but to you for your loyal dedication to his memory. Thank you.
I would also like to bring up that Silver Silvestri that came up, just for a second, tell that story really quick, what happened? That Jimmy Reddington was on the battlefield. What happened that day? Just so people understand, like, this is a little bit beyond the fact that he was from Bull's Head, and he was a great baseball field player, and he went off. But what happened that day? And what made Silver Silvestri come back and look for his grave? Because there was reasons behind this.
Well, actually, Jimmy arrived at Anwha, which was his fire base on December 16th, 1966. And four days later, in a firefight, Jimmy's best friend at the time named Sammy Monroe was shot through the head. Jimmy Reddington happened to be next to Joe Silvestri in a foxhole, and Jimmy Reddington was only there four days, and he was very, very upset. And Silvestri knew it. And he really didn't want to get close to anybody at that point, because he had seen so many people get killed, but he knew this kid was upset, and they spent the night together, and they bonded. And I have all these Polaroid photos, and they're next to each other in every photo, they're touching in every photo, and they just became very, very close. Fast forward to March 23rd, 1967, they're crossing an open field, and some guys are trapped in the middle of the field. And Joe Silvestri can hear the screaming in the middle of the field. He knows people are hurt, and some were killed. And he starts across the field, he was the fire team leader, and Jimmy was behind him. And as they crossed the field, Silvestri seen these mortars come walking in on them, and when he did, he got hit with a mortar, and he was full of shrapnel. And as he laid there, he was then shot by a sniper. Jimmy Reddington coming up behind him, seeing him, and assumed he was dead. And at that point, Jimmy started crossing the field by himself with his M79, which is a grenade, shoots grenades. And as he got across that field, another friend of ours, Joe Moss, who's from Texas, seen a shadow behind him. And he turned around, and it was Jimmy Reddington walking by himself, firing at the tree line, and he stopped, and he looked at him, and he said, "They killed Silvestri, and they're going to kill us all." And at that point, he said, Jimmy took two more steps, fired one more grenade, and was hit in the head. And he fell within 10 feet of Joe Moss. And that was it. And Joe found out in 1991 how Jimmy had died, because Joe was so severely injured, he never, you know, was out of Vietnam, and he was back in Philadelphia Naval Hospital. And he figured, you know, he had to find his grave, and it was, he found his grave on March 23rd, 1994, which would be 25 years this Saturday. And they just, that was it. He just never forgot him.
Absolutely. He was moving across that field because one of his closest friends died?
Yes.
That's why.
He charged the enemy.
By himself.
By himself.
True grit. So ladies and gentlemen, if anyone has the opportunity, please make it down to Western Field for 10:30, and then absolutely up to Cathedral Cemetery at 11:30. And this goes on every year, so please come on out. Okay. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, March 20th, 2019, Board of Commissioners, a meeting to order at 10 after 10 a.m. The Commissioners' Conference Room at 123 Wyoming Avenue, with Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay. Proclamation, presentation 19-0071. Do we have anyone here to talk about Casual Day in Lackawanna County? Come right up. Now, let's talk about this, because a lot of good people die because they don't get checked. And it's such a, I'm not saying, the process isn't, doesn't hurt anybody or anything, it's just a long, drawn-out process. But if you don't get it done, it can kill you. Let's talk about it, and how it should be done, every, what, four to five years or whatever.
Yes, good morning. My name is Karen Saunders, and I'm with the Northeast-
Thanks, Karen, for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here to thank you for recognizing this important day. Actually, we recognize the entire month of March as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month. And the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute, this is our 16th year of Casual Day. That's an acronym. Casual is an acronym for Colon Cancer Awareness Saves Unlimited Adult Lives. At the time that Casual Day started 16 years ago, the incidence and mortality rate of colon cancer in our region, the seven counties of our footprint, was over 30%. So, the good news I have today is that the incidence and mortality rate is down significantly due to our efforts, as well as nationally and regionally, other healthcare systems and physicians. But it is still important to talk about it. So, we talk about the importance for people at average risk to be screened at the age of 50. And for anyone considering screening or having a family history, to please speak to your physician about the right test for you and the right time for you to be screened. But in most cases, colon cancer is preventable, and evidence-based screening is available. So, we thank you for bringing this important point to your attention, and it gives us a platform to speak about it as much as we can during this month.
Thank you for being here, Karen. Commissioner Cummings?
It is important, and I know that, you know, there are other tests, if this is too uncomfortable, they can do other tests.
Other than a colonoscopy, yes.
Yes, they don't have to go through that. And then, well, if that other test comes back positive, then they would, but as a follow-up. But it doesn't have to be as painful as people think, so thank you for the awareness and for coming in, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
I was one of the lucky ones that was saved by that. Judge Menore came across a baseball field and said, "You're 50 now, go get that test." And he had an issue with it, and he survived, and he's doing great. And I went, and I found I have the polyp, and if I hadn't gone, that would have been the end of that, I guess. So, I'm very grateful for your making this something that's very, very much aware to the public, so that we all have enough sense to go be tested.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's exactly why we hold this event, to have conversations between friends, between family members about getting screened. So, thank you very much. I brought each of you a Casual Day pin from 2019, just in recognition, thank you. Attached to the pin is five cards. If you feel it's appropriate, you could hand them out to friends and family. Thank you.
Judge Menore, you know, I mean, he had his situation, you know what I mean? He actually went out and started, he advocated for it, for people to go get checked, that it was, I'm not saying it's a simple process, but, I mean, the process isn't that bad of a process. I mean, it could be the difference between life and death in getting checked. And we do a show, my family does this, called Community Services Upcoming Events. We had him on at least twice to talk about it. And he had no problem talking about what happened, how it happened, how he could have prevented it, and how in the future, he made sure that his brothers and everybody around him absolutely were checked, and let everybody know that this is something that's, can be done very easily. And I'd like to thank Judge Menore, because like you said, to this day, he still tells people about making sure that they get checked, and how much it matters to everyone to be, you know, to not have this type of cancer. Because of all the cancers, this is a horrific cancer that eats you from your stomach up. It's horrible. It really is.
And unfortunately, all too many of us know someone. This event is in memory of Helen Phillips, who was a woman in her 50, who had not had a colonoscopy, and she passed away because she was diagnosed late stage. So, the family came to the Cancer Institute and said, "If someone, if another family can avoid this sorrow, if one person could be spared, then our message is worth it." So, thank you for recognizing this.
If anybody wants to call and ask questions, what would they call, or what's the website?
Please do. We're located in Scranton, right on the campus of the University of Scranton, and our website is readily available. There's a lot of information there, too, about the disease, and we are an information and referral source in the community, so if anyone had questions on any kind of cancer, any resources in the community, they can call our office and speak with an RN and a master's level oncology social worker. We, please give our office a call.
And there's a lot more options. Like I said, you have more options than years past.
Than just a colonoscopy, yep.
Yeah, so people can come on, they can ask the questions they need to ask. We have a proclamation for you. Whereas colon rectal cancer are one of the most frequently diagnosed cancers in northeast Pennsylvania, with incidence and mortality rate in some areas as much as 15% higher than the U.S. average. Whereas about 75% of new cases of colon and rectal cancer occur in patients of average risk, approximately 525 new cases are diagnosed. Over 200 patients died from colon cancer each year in the counties of Lackawanna, Luzerne, Monroe, Pike, Susquehanna, Wayne, and Wyoming combined. Whereas Northeast Regional Cancer Institute has been easing the burden of cancer in northeast Pennsylvania for 25 years through community and patient services at the hospital, and practice support services, and cancer surveillance programs specifically designed to meet the unique needs of our region. Whereas on Thursday, March 28th, 2019, Northeast Regional Cancer Institute sponsored the 16th Annual Casual Day, Colon Cancer Awareness Saves Unlimited Adult Lives Day. Whereas Casual Day was established by the family of Helen Phillips, who fought a courageous battle against colon cancer and died in the summer of 2002. Now, therefore, we, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry O'Terriani, and Lorraine Cummings, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby urge residents to be screened, please be screened, for early detection of colon cancer, and to participate and support Northeast Regional Cancer Institute in its colon cancer awareness efforts, and proclaim March 28th, 2019, on behalf of our 214,000 citizens, as Casual Day in Lackawanna County. Would you like to come forward?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, 19-0, excuse me, 19-0072, Small Business Spotlight.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have Acapinti Dance Company, and here today is Michelle and Ashley Acapinti, Ashley Acapinti Kaminski and Michelle Acapinti. Hi, how are you?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Michelle Acapinti, this is my sister, Ashley, and we are the owners of Acapinti Dance Company, located in Covington Township, up in North Pocono. And we thank you for asking us here today to honor our business, and we're celebrating 10 years in business this year. Back in 2008, we stepped into an empty studio and decided to take a risk and opened our doors in the fall of 2008, and celebrated our first show. And we've spent 10 years building a great business. We just moved to a new location, and we doubled the size of our studio, and we continue to have roughly 100 to 125 students each year, and we've really built a family along the way. So, we're really proud of our company, and all of our students and their families.
That's great. What made you decide to do this initially?
Well, we were afforded, graciously afforded, the opportunity to dance at a very young age from our parents. I started at age six, and Ashley at age three, and we just never stopped. So, after graduating college, Ashley was still at Penn State. We kind of had an opportunity in front of us and decided that maybe it was time. We had a lot of people in our community asking us to open a studio, and we didn't know how it was going to go, but we said, "What's the worst that could happen? It doesn't work out." And here we are 10 years later. So, we've really tried to build a company based on our family values, and we always tell our students that we are a family at ODC. So, and it's really built a reputation in our community, and our children even created a chant that they do before our shows and things like that about the family that we are, and it's become our second home. So, we continue to build in our business, and we started out just having simple dance recitals, and now we've built into a company that does acting and performing, and furthered our education of our students, and we've put on productions such as The Nutcracker. This year, we're doing Mary Poppins. Our children are doing full-length roles of the actors and all of that. So, we are very proud, and we continue, and we're hoping for another great 10 years ahead of us, so.
That's really exciting that you're expanding it.
Yeah.
You know, all my girls went to dance. And, you know, I always required they had to be involved in two things after school to keep them busy, so that was one of them. And, you know, that really is something that gives them a lot of opportunity to learn how to, you know, follow directions, and how to actually lead on their own, where they create their own dance steps, as you obviously did, because you started your own company. And it's just so interesting for me to see that the different businesses that come in here all the time, that learn that from their experiences in life, give them an idea to start a business. And you're yet another example of that happening, and you took something that you're passionate about and made an opportunity for both of you, and now you're growing into different areas. And I'm just so proud that you're here, so proud of the work you've done, and congratulations, great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your anniversary. I really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome.
I see that with my own daughter, like, she's seven now, but she's grown up in the company, basically in the car seat. She would sit there, and everybody knows my daughter, Kennedy. And already, at the age of seven, she's starting to find that spark, and she'll give us ideas for recitals. So, she's learning the ropes along the way, and it's exciting to watch that, so I understand what you say about your daughters, and encouraging those things with them, so.
Isn't that great? That's beautiful.
It is, it's a meaningful-
That's a beautiful story. And, you know, you're an inspiration to your daughter, and to all of your peers, that look to you and say, "Wow, look what they just did." And, you know, I'm not sure how much, you know, you've learned from your other friends or anything that watched you and decided, "You know what? I have an idea, I think I'm going to start a business." But that's basically the reason that I wanted to make sure that we did this here, so that we can show the community that we can make it here in our own community with, based on our own ideas and innovative things that we have, and ideas that we want to do, and with the passions that we have. So, you're just a great example of that. So, thank you for being a positive role model to the community, and for showing people that, yes, you can do it, and as long as you like what you're doing and have the passion to do it, you're the example that we like to show. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Your passion for your work is something that should be admired. Our daughter started when she was young. She continued on with dance, and singing voice, and acting, and my wife and I were in New York on Saturday, and she was in a show.
Oh, that's wonderful.
It is. And it all started with dance, and it's a wonderful thing, and thank you for your commitment to our community, and to Lackawanna County, and to our area. And you do make a difference. And thank you again.
Thank you.
You were in the Moscow Villager.
We were, yeah, a few times.
We thought this would be a good opportunity to bring you in, because we would try to make sure that we get, you know, businesses from all over Lackawanna County. And I think your story's great, you know, your parents, congratulations, you had great parents, they made sure that you were involved.
We do. My mom always says she had dinner waiting in the car for us, but that didn't matter. She got us where we needed to be, whether it was softball games, piano lessons, or dance. We did it all. And I think, you know, we've grown into people who were trying to be role models for our students, my own children. Ashley and I are both teachers at North Pocono as well. We teach first grade.
Oh, wow, you're busy.
So, people say to us all the time, "How do you do it?" Well, we have a great staff, and we help each other, and, like I said, we have a family that backs us when we opened our new studio. Our whole family was there painting and spackling and getting the building ready, so that's why we can do what we do.
So, how does this work? So, you must have some students that you have during the day, and then at night, they come back?
Yes.
So, you're molding, actually, these students, both of you, in two different ways?
Mm-hmm.
Mentally, physically, spiritually, kind of, you know?
Some of our-
Mentally, physically.
Yeah, some of our students who have graduated, I was their babysitter to start out with, and, you know, I had them in school and kindergarten, and then they started to dance when they heard we had a dance studio, and now they're graduating high school, so it's really neat to watch them progress through the years.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This really matters to the North Pocono area. Phone number, let's talk about the phone number, if they want to get ahold of you.
570-878-4076. And we're also on Facebook, Instagram, and AcapintiDanceCompany.com. I mean, you can really find us anywhere, so.
Congratulations on the great impact you have on all of your students in both capacities.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Commissioner Cummings?
So, today, we have a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Acapinti Dance Company in honor of achieving the designation of a Small Business Spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this 20th day of March, 2019, by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry O'Terriani, and myself, Commissioner Lorraine Cummings. So proud of your work, and thank you so much. Come on up.
Thank you.
Great story.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Where's your girls' room?
Oh, gosh, let's see, it was Rosemary, she had it mentioned.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that Mom? Mom, how about that call?
They might be anywhere else.
Do you still have to have dinner done?
Come on up, Mom.
Come on, Mom. Come on, you can let Mom get up here for a second, because they wouldn't have the business if it wasn't for Mom, who made sure.
There you go. Thank you.
Karen, you're a little there. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You have good daughters.
Thank you.
You're lucky. Smile. Is that mom? Mom, how about that call? Do you still have to have dinner done?
Come on up, mom.
Come on, mom. Come on, you can let mom get up here for a second. Because they wouldn't have the business if it wasn't for mom who made sure.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You have good daughters.
Thank you.
Smile. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I had a feeling that was mom when she popped up, I said, that must be mom.
Isn't that a great story? I just love all the stories that come in.
Family story.
Really nice.
Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only.
Joan Hodawanitz, 101 Penn Avenue, Scranton. With regard to current payables, I was pleased to see nothing reflecting payments for legal fees. Am I correct, Mr. DeBilio?
That's correct.
I was happy to see that that figure did not go up. But I did have a question. There's a company, Multiscape, page sixteen of the payment register. I can't remember who they are or what they do, but they had a payment of four hundred and ninety-six thousand eighty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Does anybody remember who Multiscape Incorporated is and what they do?
We better, if we don't, we're in real big trouble.
Who are they?
They're the ones that are doing all the work inside the building.
Still here?
Yes.
Okay, so the invoices are catching up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if we didn't know that name, it's very scary. Thanks. Thanks, Joan. Okay, anything else? Okay, resolutions, nineteen dash zero zero seven zero, approving current payables. I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Oh, geez, sir.
And I don't want to get out of order here. My name is Leo Russo. I'm with Vahala Veteran Services. And I had an issue to bring up to you guys. Is this now the time?
No, it's gotta be, it's at the end.
Is it the end?
This is agenda items only.
Is it on the agenda?
No, I'll go sit down until the end then.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's, sorry, if it's on the, sorry, if it's on the agenda, then you can talk about it and then, then we'll go back and forth with you. But now you'll be at the end, okay? Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the question, Mr. DeBilio, everything is good?
Yes, Commissioners, all payables are in order. As Joan mentioned, there are no invoices related to the prison probe. I'd like to mention that I gave you a hard copy of our Controller's Office Annual Audit Activity Report as required by the Home Rule Charter and the Pennsylvania County Code. I emailed it to you previously, as you probably know. It's on the county website. It covers the work that we've done in the Controller's Office in two thousand and eighteen and even beyond. But if you have any questions, please let me know. And I just want to thank my great staff for all the work that they do. Thank you very much.
Good job, Gary.
Yes, thank you, Gary.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Yes, nineteen dash zero zero five five.
Here resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an engagement letter with Baker Tilly LLP from Wilkes-Barre to perform an audit services for the year ending December thirty-first, 2018 at a cost not to exceed one hundred forty-five thousand dollars. And here to speak on this resolution is our Chief Financial Officer, Tom Durkin.
Thank you, Fran. Good morning, Commissioners. This is essentially a renewal of another audit engagement. This is the big one, this is for the county audit. Baker Tilly has been the firm that's been doing the county audit since two thousand and ten, I believe. They do a great job for us. And the, the price in this year is a small increase, about three percent. But again, it's just a renewal of the audit engagement for two thousand and eighteen's audit is what it is.
I would just like to also explain that Baker Tilly does a great job. They get our audit done on time. And, you know, other municipalities don't have that opportunity, they're behind. We're not behind. Baker Tilly comes in, you'll see them on our floors, you'll see them on different floors in this building, working for like, when they'll probably start probably like late March or something like that.
They, actually, they've been in already. They were in to do preliminary work in January. Normally, they come in in December, but because of the uproar here with moving to the new building, they, they waited until January to begin their planning work for the audit. They come in to see the scope of what our revenues and expenditures are so that they can kind of figure out, excuse me, back at their office, what the scope of their engagement will be so that they have strict limits as to, you know, any transaction over, and I don't know what the number is, over two hundred thousand dollars, they've got to include that in, in the work that they're doing. So they've already been in to do that. And they told us that they'll be here to do the main field work beginning in late April, like the last week of April they'll be here. And they'll be here probably from then until the middle of June, at which point in time they'll wrap up the field work. And then they'll just be waiting for certain pieces of the audit, like component units, the pension audit, things of that nature. And hopefully, we can get those compiled early enough for them. We're hoping to get the audit released before the end of August. As you said, Commissioner, since Baker Tilly's been doing the audit, and Baker Tilly is the resulting company from what used to be Perenny Randolph. This started as Perenny Randolph, but they were purchased by another company and they became Perenny Beard. And then Perenny Beard was purchased by Baker Tilly, which is probably among the top fifteen or twenty audit firms in the county, or in the country. So it's still Perenny Randolph essentially because it's those people who are doing the work. But they'll be back and we hope, they have been able to produce our audits before our September thirtieth deadline, which is a requirement in some of our bond indentures that we have to have an annual audit prepared by September thirtieth and released. They've been able to do that since they started doing work for the county in two thousand and eleven, I believe it was. And they haven't been late once. But we're trying to get this even better and maybe get it released by the end of August this year. That's what our goal is, I hope we can reach it.
I'd just like also to say that these audits are part of the reason why, you know, I mean, making sure that we're fiscally responsible, that we have an A-stable bond rating and fund balance and all the other opportunities that got rid of the surveillance fee that was at one point over a million bucks and down to four hundred thousand. And that was eliminated when we got our A-stable bond rating. But having the audits done on time is like a mandatory piece to this puzzle to make sure that we're fiscally and financially responsible. Am I right, Tom?
That's absolutely correct, Commissioner.
Does the board have any questions? Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into an engagement letter with audit services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, nineteen dash zero zero five six.
This is entering into an agreement with the Career Technology Center. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County for the administration and operation of a Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board Business Education Partnership Grant Project providing varied career and occupational awareness activities for students elementary through high school during the period of March first, 2019 through June thirtieth, 2020. Here to speak on the resolution is the Workforce Development Board Director, Virginia Torano.
Good morning, Virginia, how are you?
Good morning, Commissioners, thanks for having me. Again, I'd like to speak on some of the activities that are proposed under this agreement. We're very excited about this agreement. It's working directly with the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County. And it's to provide, as was said, career exploration activities for both the younger students as well as the older students. There are four specific activities under this agreement. The first one is very innovative and it's something we've never done before. And it's being produced, it's a booklet being produced by the students at the Career Technology Center explaining all of the occupational fields at the center. It is geared to third grade students. And what's so unique about this is that I have a, it doesn't look like anything, but it's a booklet and it's, it's a caricature booklet. And what happens with this is on each page, they describe one of the shops in the Career Technology Center. And up in the corner of each page is going to be a little icon. And you can put that icon on your phone. And when you scroll over the top of the page, it becomes animated. And each page, a little, a little caricature comes out onto the page and is talking to the students at their level, at a third grade level. And then what's really neat about it, that caricature introduces a student at the Career Technology Center, and this is all done on your phone, and a video comes on of the student sitting in the shop explaining what happens in the shop at the Career Technology Center. It's not completed yet, but it is really, it's a cool idea.
Mark, can we get Zol, Holman in on her phone to get that on, on ECTV to show? Because she's, do you have the ability on one of them to show that?
I'll try it, as we know. I've tried this before, sometimes I can't get it to work.
This is really interesting. I mean, this is something that we need in this area. And Virginia, how many, it goes through every single...
It'll go to all the third grade graders in Lackawanna County.
But the jobs that they're, they're showing that...
Yeah, it will, it will, I talk about careers in automotive technology, building mechanics, commercial and advertising design, anything that is happening at the Career Technology Center. There will be an icon for it and it will go into each of the shops. And it's really cool, do you want me to try it?
Yeah, if you could, I mean, I know it's not fully vetted yet, but this is just, the part that she showed me on her phone is really something that I'm so happy with the work that they've done on this. And I commend Virginia on, on all the work that she's done to try and help people to get, you know, we have to start promoting some of the skillsets that we need in our area. And this is a perfect opportunity to allow us to get this into the school systems for the youth.
I don't...
Oh, there, there we go. Do you want to show them again? Sorry.
Do it this way?
Yeah, he can...
Do you want, want to come over towards you with it?
Stay right there, Virginia.
Here's the little caricature.
Can you put it by the microphone? Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry. That's a good camera, Mark, cheapers.
Is that good?
Virginia, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's basically showing one of the students from CTC is actually sitting there addressing the third grader and telling them about the department that they're working in. It's, it's really an interesting program and I commend your work on that. Thank you so much for, for all that you've done there.
We're really excited about this. I can't wait until it's done and we get it out there. We'll make sure you have it and we'll show you.
We can tell you're excited, that's good.
I am excited.
It is exciting. She did a great job on all this, so, yeah.
This really matters, it does, it does.
Well, it's just, it's just amazing what they can do.
Yeah, with the technology.
With the phone, right, what you can do.
Yeah.
The second activity is a welder source camp for the summer. This will be for high school age students. It will be over a two-week period. And they will learn basic welding in the first week and then in the second week, a little bit more advanced welding. Of course, they'll be able to identify and they'll be required to hear to all safety requirements. So that's a camp for the summer. The next would be a computer building and networking academy, which will run after school during the next upcoming school year, starting in September. And the youngsters, again, high school students, will learn how to build a computer from a, from scratch and then learn how to network it. Again, teaching them STEM occupations and how to work with electronics and all of that. And then the third, the fourth activity under this agreement would be a career exploration for fifth graders, a tour. The funds under this grant would pay for tours for fifth graders to go to the CTC to actually see it. So down the road, once we produce this for the third graders and they hear all about it through this booklet, then they can actually be tour, in fifth grade, they'll tour the CTC. And it's to promote careers, technical careers, which of course, we all know are very important and we need it in today's society.
Yeah.
Commissioner Oteriani?
No, I'm, great job, Virginia.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into an agreement with Career Technology Center. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. I know Virginia, if she could vote, she'd say yes to. Great job, Virginia.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nineteen dash zero zero five seven.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into an agreement with Johnson College. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter, into an agreement with Johnson College for the administration and operation of a transitional assistance for needy families, T-A-N-F project to provide awareness of career opportunities in the STEM workforce coupled with college student readiness skills for eligible youths to be effective February first, 2019 through June thirtieth, 2019. And again, here to speak on it is Virginia Torano.
Thank you. This project, again, is, is under a grant from the Commonwealth that the Workforce Board received. And it will be, it's an eight-week program that targets first-generation college students and it, it brings them in and it will teach them how, first of all, to get acclimated to college life and also work with some STEM occupations such as they'll, oh wait, am I wrong? Pre-deprinting, computer programming, pre-de, three D printing for advanced manufacturing, circuitry, and how to work an electrical board, those types of activities. And this is geared for students between the ages of like sixteen and nineteen.
Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into agreement with Johnson College. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero zero five eight.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into an agreement with Lackawanna Pro Bono Incorporated. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Lackawanna Pro Bono Incorporated for the administration and operation of a transitional assistance for needy families project to provide education about the possible effects of having a juvenile court record and assistance in expunging that record, if possible, for fifteen to thirty eligible youths to be effective February first, 2019 through June thirtieth, 2019. And again, Virginia Torano.
Thank you. Again, under a grant from the Commonwealth, this targets eighteen to twenty-four-year-old individuals who have a prior juvenile record, which may impede their ability to get into a higher education or into employment. There are three goals with this project. To educate and inform individuals about the barriers juvenile records pose and what, if anything, can be done to eliminate them. Provision of legal advice concerning expungement and legal representation to those qualified individuals who have the best chance of having their juvenile records expunged. It will be accomplished through three information sessions that will be conducted by Lackawanna County Pro Bono. The attorney fees, of course, will be without charge to the individual.
This is, this is really great.
It's a great program.
I've, I've known people that have done silly things when they were kids or even in their early twenties and, yeah, I mean, they always just seemed that this would always be a blemish on their records.
It will be.
Being good family people are just good individuals that contribute back and, you know, go and work every day and just care about their lives and, you know, just all the good stuff. And they just have this little blemish and, you know, all of us deserve an eraser somewhere in life. And this can be a great opportunity, you know, to be that eraser for them, so, no, it's great. Commissioner Cummings?
When you had presented this, again, great job in finding opportunities for us to help individuals that are trying to get into the workforce. help individuals that are trying to get into the workforce, because I know many people come into my office and my business that I own, and they'll have something on their record, and they're concerned about it, and a lot of times, they're afraid to tell you. But once they don't tell you, and they check a no, when they should have checked a yes, that's when you can't hire them. So a lot of times, they'll come in, and I actually tell them, did you ever look at getting this expunged? And they had no idea that they could do that.
Right.
So this is really, and I understand it's the first time that you've done a program like this, so...
It is.
Kudos to you for trying to bring some new ideas into areas that might be helpful to the public, and everyone, I don't care who you are, everyone deserves a second chance, no matter what. And you're giving them this opportunity for a second chance, so thank you so much for your work on this, Virginia. Great job.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Great program, Virginia. Kind of long overdue.
Yeah.
But really, really a good program, and it's got a start, and it's a, it's a good step in the first, in the right direction. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, and also, you know, if you had to go through attorneys and courts and stuff, it's just very, very, very expensive.
Yes, it is.
And like you said, I mean, some of these individuals, you know, I mean, they just might need this opportunity, like you said, you know, they're, they don't want to say that they have this little, this issue they have in the past, but they have to say it because it's requested on the job application, and if they don't do it, then it's like, basically, you're done, you know, so.
Yeah.
This is good. This is, this can be very helpful, so congratulations, I truly believe in this.
Thank you.
It's great. Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into an agreement, Lackawanna County Pro Bono Inc. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Nineteen dash zero zero five nine.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into an agreement with Better Tomorrow's. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Better Tomorrow's for the administration and operation of Transitional Assistance for Needy Families, project to provide career exploration and secondary education planning for fifteen eligible youths to be effective February 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2019. Again, Virginia Toronto to speak on the resolution.
Thank you. Again, this project is under our TANF grant from the Commonwealth. It is a pilot project in that we have worked with Better Tomorrow's before, and we have worked in the Village Park Housing Development. However, we have always done it with younger students. The state changed the regulations this year for the Transitional Assistance for Needy Families grant. It used to serve youngsters from five to eighteen years of age, and now it serves youngsters from twelve years of age to twenty-four years of age. So Better Tomorrow's proposed a program for middle, low-income, middle-school youngsters, ages twelve to fifteen this time, and they will be, again, it's a career awareness project to, and a little bit of homework assistance and some counseling, and helping kids get acclimated if they're having problems in early high school and in middle school. So it's an after-school program. It will run for eight weeks during the remainder of the school season.
Nice. Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into agreement with Better Tomorrow. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero zero six zero.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is entering into an agreement with the Scranton Cultural Center. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with the Scranton Cultural Center for the administration and operation of a Transitional Assistance for Needy Families project to provide interactive, career-focused workshops, educational lectures, and hands-on experience in the theater arts field for twelve TANF-eligible youths to be effective February 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2019. And for the last time to speak, Virginia Toronto.
Thank you. Again, under, this is under our TANF grant from the state, and it is called Career Exploration in the Theater Arts. I will tell you that we have done this in the past for a good number of years, and after our project last year, and after some suggestions by Commissioner Cummings, we realized that we're not all going to be actresses, and there's more to the entertainment industry than just performing on stage. That's wonderful, if you can do it. However, this year, we redesigned the program, or we redesigned our proposal format, so that the, that anybody proposing had to provide us with a schedule of activities of exactly what was going to happen on a weekly basis. So in line with careers in the entertainment industry, these youngsters will be receiving, yes, some acting, but also lessons in sound, in set decoration, in establishing and developing the sets, in costuming, scenic construction, sewing. Maybe they don't think that's involved, but that's involved in a career in the theater, lighting, so all of the other activities.
It's involved in life.
And, and as, you know, we have said, even up on Montage Mountain, somebody has to put those sets up and down when people perform. So there are good jobs in the entertainment industry that are not right in front of the audience.
There's a stagehand crew that's in the area, it's a local union, they do all that stuff, absolutely.
So this will do that. It will provide a much more rounded perspective of the entertainment industry and the jobs.
Nice. Anybody, the board have any questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a thank you to Virginia, because she actually took what I said to heart, and looked into the grant, and changed it to make sure it actually had to do with workforce development. Because what my question was, is we are, you know, paying for someone to be in a play for, you know, that's, that was it. And she went and created a forum that actually taught them what she sang, stage crew, and breakdown, and lighting, and some of those people get paid a lot of money, so...
What a Broadway.
Yeah, so thank you very much for looking at what I had said, and making it changes that help the community. I greatly appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
No, great program, Virginia. Absolutely necessary in the theater, and it's a...
Thank you.
Another step in the right direction. Thank you.
Lots of great votes today, really. But this one's a real interesting one, I like this, because like you said, you teach how to be a stagehand, how to create and stuff, it's a little bit everything.
But they didn't before.
Yeah, no. It sounds really silly, teaching you just how to sew. Like, my grandmother knew how to sew. My mom knew how to sew. I don't know how to sew. You know what I mean? It's funny, like, you know, I mean, like, just basic stuff, just like little things, like, if I ever try to put a button on something, I'll be calling my mother-in-law, can you put a button on? No, but it's, it's, it really is, it's just, it's good because it's a combination of a lot of things together, not just one thing.
Right.
A lot of things that go into it, so, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I could tell by the smile on your face that this is, you know, this matters.
Yeah.
It's really good.
So proud, thanks, Virginia.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into agreement with the Scranton Cultural Center. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Virginia. Nineteen dash zero zero six one.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution approving arts and culture grants. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award the art and cultural mini-grants to the following community organizations. Clark Summitt Borough, $500 for a month-long art exhibit of Abington Heights School students, The Gathering Place. Dixon City Borough, $500 to help cover the costs of musical entertainment and arts activities at Dixon City Days. Mayfield Borough, $500 for the annual concerts in the Park Series in August. And Oliphant Borough, $500 for musical entertainment at the Fireman's Picnics in July and August. And here to speak on the resolutions are Deputy Director of Arts and Culture, Maureen McGuigan.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, how are you? This is just our, I shouldn't say just, it's a great program, our $500 mini-grants for all of, there's forty municipalities in Lackawanna County, and we want to make sure that our arts and culture funding is getting around the county, so today's the first day of spring, and you can start planning your, your summer activities, so...
Nice. Does the board have any questions? I would just like to say that these mini-grants are very helpful, and I had an opportunity during the ICE Festival to go to The Gathering Place.
Oh, yes.
And they do so many great things up there in that Clark Summitt Main Street section. And like you said, I know the money is wisely used, and it's absolutely something that brings so much back to the community, but, but thank you very much. This, like you said, The Gathering Place is very, very nice, and they do great things. Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving arts and culture grants. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero zero six two.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution awarding a community project grant. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award a community project grant of $1,700 to the Abington Area Joint Recreation Board for their Hillside Park Summer Concert Series. Here to speak once again is our Director, Maureen McGuigan.
So this is a free community program, it's been going on for a while up there in the beautiful lake there in Hillside Park, and it's free, there's a number of concerts all summer. It's very supported by the Clark Summitt community, but anybody can go, so...
Does the board have any questions? I've gone to these concerts, it's great, families are sitting there, there are blankets on the grass, the lake's there, it's really, really a beautiful background for the concerts, and like you said, it's not just for people of Clark Summitt, or anyone in Lackawanna County, so when you hear about the dates or the opportunity to go up there in times, please, you know, go up. It's really enjoyable, you get a lot of family fun, it's really nice, so... Okay, I'd like to make a motion awarding the community project grants. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen, thanks, Maureen, nineteen dash zero zero six three.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution approving Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Contracts. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Contracts for fiscal 2018, 2019, as, as attached here too.
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Commissioners. These are for our contracts for youth services. It's primarily a placement facility for delinquent youth, or adjudicated delinquent youth, drug and alcohol rehabilitation service, also residential treatment, and primarily, again, for our juvenile probation-covered youth. Brian Kelly, it's our, for our annual audit. Burke One is a firm that retains our adoption records electronically. And Ruth Lenahan is replacing a court-appointed attorney that resigned from a, from parent representation recently.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Browning?
No, I just think I had the question on the financing, so we're going to look at that further with the $100,000. Is that involved in this one as well?
Which one is that? I'm sorry.
The $100,000 that we discussed, under risk assessment?
Under, oh, yeah, in the next item.
Okay, thanks, sorry. Sorry, guys.
That's all right.
Okay. Approving an Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Contracts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero zero six four.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution approving the addendums for the Office of Youth and Family Services. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the addendums to the professional contracts for the Children's Advocacy Center and the County of North Hampton for the offices of Youth and Family Services for fiscal years 2018, 29. And once again, to speak on the resolution is Bill Browning.
The North Hampton County amendment amends our current detention facility contract with them to include residential services, so the detention facility in general is for thirty days until adjudication. And so prior to that, they would like to conduct a risk assessment. The risk assessment is performed by clinical staff, psychologists, who will then determine the appropriateness of placement in their residential facility, which is separate from their detention facility. The Children's Advocacy Center, based on their rate and increased usage, that they had expended their previous cap in November, and are asked, and requested an increase in funding to carry them through until June 30th, which, at which point, we will be renegotiating rates and contract with them.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Browning?
So Bill, does that mean it's a 295 now? It went from 195 to 295?
It would be at a 195 now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving the addendum for the Office of Youth and Family Services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Bill. Nineteen dash zero zero six five.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into aging contract amendments. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into contract amendments on behalf of the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging with the Greenhouse Project and the Dunmore Senior Center, as attached here too. Here to speak on this is Jason Cavulich.
Good morning, Jason. Commissioners. We ran a pilot program with the Greenhouse Project last year, if you recall, to do senior activities, nature walks, succulent planting, gentle chair yoga. It was one of our most successful programs of the year.
You can't shut the door? Oh, yeah, we can, okay.
No.
Sorry. It was one of our most successful programs of the year, so we're going to renew the contract this year and expand it to offer more services to the seniors. The Dunmore Community Center has had a very successful year, they are providing more services to more seniors than anticipated, so we're going to move additional funds to the center so that it does not have to, so it doesn't have to close before the end of the fiscal year. The operational money will, will help keep the doors open, and help keep meals and activities going for seniors in Dunmore. Okay.
Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into an aging contract amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Nineteen dash zero zero six six.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into a professional services agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a professional services agreement on behalf of the Department of Human Services Area Agency on Aging with Information Age Technologies, term to commence March 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020, and not to exceed $21,000. And here to speak on the resolution is Director of Area Agency on Aging, Jason Cavulich.
This contract expands our current copilot contract. Copilots is the computer system that we use to manage the senior centers and some of our fiscal operation. What this, this addition to the contract allows us to do is to ask them to develop reports that we may need, to draw data out of our existing information, and build on our programming. So we don't anticipate using nearly $21,000 of this money at any given fiscal year, but if we did have to access a report, it's $110 an hour for them to develop it.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion entering into a professional service agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Nineteen dash zero zero six nine.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution with the appointment to the Lackawanna County Conservation District Board. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Conservation District Board. Commissioner Laureen Cummings, Wyoming Avenue in Scranton. Please hold your applause until the end of the reading. A one-year term effective immediately and to expire on December 31st, 2019.
I'd like to make the motion for the appointment to Lackawanna County Conservation Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the question. Is there anything I'd like to say? I know that you actually thoroughly enjoy going up there and...
I have to say, I enjoy that meeting much better than I do this one. And they feed me, so...
Wow.
No, I'm only kidding. I really didn't expect to enjoy the work that I do as much as I do, so I appreciate the nomination to that board again. And I just want to thank the board and the Conservation District for all the work that they do. They're an amazing group of people. They really care about the community, and it's not all about, you know, what the media portrays it to be. It's, you know, things that are actually helping to preserve our water and our...without crushing the taxpayer, and that's basically what they try to do, is not implement programs that are going to hurt anyone. And our farmers have been tremendous in helping the community and the Chesapeake Bay. They've done so much work that I was not aware of, and I think that I brought information to our boards, let them know what's been happening that the community didn't know either. And, you know, our farmers should be applauded for the work that they do, not only to feed us and our community, but for the way that they try to protect our environment through the work that they do. And it's amazing. It's amazing to see. And, you know, we've gone up to the farms now and seen some things that they do, and the work just continues. And, you know, our director is excellent. Jerry's done a great job, and the board has done a great job, so I can't be more proud of the work that they've all done and to be a member of that board. So, thank you so much, very much for the nomination. I greatly appreciate it.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
I think that Commissioner Cummings does a great job on that board, and she keeps us well informed of what activities they're involved with, and I'd just like to thank her for doing a good job.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I also would like to thank Commissioner Cummings. Geez, we know more about soil and runoff and water and a lot of other things that we didn't, even like when I was here the first four years, you know, I mean, whoever was on that board was very...you know, you'd hear a little bit about it, but we actually have people come into our commissioners' meetings, Jerry Stiles and some of his other staff, to come in and talk about what's going on and silt and getting into the Chesapeake Bay and fish issues and things that...and I think that the viewing audience actually are better educated now with Commissioner Cummings being on the board because of you bringing it back here and the things that...like, there's a lot you could talk about. We could talk about a lot every meeting, but you bring back the things that are very necessary that people should know about, and I think that really matters. So, congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I appreciate it.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings.
I'm going to have to abstain for obvious reasons.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. 19-0067.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a motion to award the Hope Horn Red Wing Sculpture Restoration and Relocation to Reclamation Industrial Furnishings, the lowest responsible bidder, at $48,000. Here to speak on the motion is our Deputy Director of Arts and Culture, Maureen McGuigan.
And I had to bring...oh, did you want to say something, Commissioner? You're just waiting. You're anticipating. I had to bring Gary Cavill up here from the county's engineer, and I really need to thank his team, he and Rox DeHovitch. I think it's important to recognize, I would not have been able to do this project. I don't have, you know, I could do the art history part, but the actual knowing how to move it responsibly and professionally, I really needed their help. So, if you have any questions on that part of it, you can refer them to...did you want to say anything?
No.
Oh, you're good, okay. So, this sculpture has been on the courthouse. It was gifted to the county by Hope Horn, who's a prominent northeastern Pennsylvania artist. She was both a painter and worked in metal, so her work is up at the Everheart. So, right now in the courthouse, it's in a dangerous spot, and when we looked at that and talked about possibly where we could move it, it made natural sense to go to the Everheart because they have her work and the landscape there, we felt it fit better. So, we're excited. This has been a long time coming, and we're really happy we were able to give the...you know, we have a local company who, you know, we made sure they were all qualified, we got all wonderful applications, but we're excited about this project. It's a big one, though, so again, I want to thank my team.
Does the board have any questions?
I just, I am so thrilled. You know, I had brought this up, and I want to thank the board for, you know, supporting me and trying to move the statue because it truly was something that someone can get hurt on because of the shape and where it was located. So, thank you to both of you for your support on this issue, and thank you, Maureen, for your work, and thank you, Gary, for this as well, for doing it appropriately, because I didn't realize moving a statue required so much, and it has a cost to the taxpayers, but it really is a necessary cost because where that is right now was very dangerous, and the shape of it, it was, you know, and it needed to be redone anyway because it's not doing the justice that it should deserve where it's at. I think where you're moving it, it will at that point, so I'm thrilled, and I've been waiting for this, what, since, you know, since I got here? I think it was here a month when I looked into that, but thank you so much.
Thank you for pointing out, thank you for your support, and also that, you know, if people had a question on the cost, it is, we estimate, a two-ton sculpture, so there's a lot of process in it. So, we were happy with the award. We feel it's fiscally responsible, but will be done professionally.
Thanks for your work on this, all of you, and thanks very much for handling it in a professional way. Appreciate it.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Well, I'm very happy with it.
I would just like to thank that first and foremost, I'm happy that someone within the community is actually going to be the one that's going to move it up there and put it in the right spot. I think it's going to be a great addition to the Everheart Museum. I think the board will be very thrilled, and they already know that it's coming, but this would be a great opportunity for outside because they do have some open grass spaces, and this will, you know, this will provide something extra for people to go over and to look at before they enter it into the museum. So, I think it's a great area, and it's the perfect place for it to be. So, thank you. Thank you, both of you. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to award Hope Horn Red Wing Sculpture Restoration and Relocation to the Industrial Furnishing at the lowest responsible bidder at $48,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Well, I should come in and talk about sculpture more often. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Yeah.
Rick Johnson will sleep easier, yeah, definitely.
But I think it's going to be great up there because there's some really great grassy spaces up there, and it'll be something extra for people to be able to walk up to and see.
And if you don't mind, I really believe in thanking people, even before this started, why it took so long, we really had to do our due diligence. So, I had Richard Leonori and somebody from the Everheart and the Hope Horn Gallery, and they really researched to make sure we do it properly and respect Hope's work, and there was a committee, so it was a real community effort, so I just want to make sure I thanked the committee as well.
And the painting, it's going to be sanded down, repainted, and it's going to be placed with nice, even sidewalk. It's going to be great. It really is.
It'll look much better there. Should have been there, I mean, it just will. I think it'll do more justice, anyway. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen.
19-0068.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a motion to award the Stauffer Industrial Park Phase One to the lowest responsible bidder for the base bid and alternate bid, American Asphalt, in the amount of $515,000.
Thank you, Fran. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is the first phase of Stauffer Industrial Park. We have a, I believe it's about a $550,000 multimodal grant, and we're also matching another $220,000 that's been put aside by Tom Durkin in the budget to move forward with this first phase. So, we're very happy with where the bids came in. We're also moving forward with the second part of the design right now, which is an art grant, I believe, for about $980,000, but that's going through a PENDOT process, so it's much lengthier. That will probably be put out to bid next year, but this will get done this year, so probably I would think we'd be starting the end of April.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Cavill?
I'm just happy it's moving ahead with the project, and, you know, I just, I sat with Sandy Upchinsky yesterday for over an hour on going through some of the grants that she does, and I appreciate the work that she's done as well, so...
Yeah. Commissioner, I was just in a conversation with her, too, to apply for the third phase for an art grant.
Yeah, she's really done a tremendous job on this, so, I mean, she should be commended for the work that she's done, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate your work as well. It doesn't lessen my appreciation for you, but this is something that really needed to get done, and it's been a long, drawn-out process, but we're finally here, so I'm happy the work will be starting. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Carroll.
Time to get the project going, Gary.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is long in coming. I'd also like to thank Sandy Upchinsky. These grants are so helpful, and they just get things done, and they, like, when we talk about the community reinvestment grants, getting the small projects for communities over the finish line, these grants get our big projects over the finish line, and that road down there's been desperate need of work for quite a while, and this is going to be great, and it's going to be great for all, like you said, the big trucks coming in and out. It'll make it a smoother drive right in, and it'll be a plus for anybody that cuts across through the industrial park to go from Kaiser Avenue to Taylor, so I think this is great. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to award the Stauffer Industrial Park Phase One to the lowest responsible bidder with a base bid of alternate bid to American Asphalt in the amount of $515,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioners, other business.
Is this...you have opportunity for the public?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, geez. You know what? The way it's set up, it was set up...yeah, okay, yeah, I was just reading right through it. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
You should wait, you should wait.
Sorry about that. We would have had you on earlier, but it just has to be what we have in front of us to start.
Yeah, no, stay in order. My name is Leo Russo. Full disclosure, I'm in the local media, but I'm not here today as a journalist.
You need an address. You have to give us your name and your address.
Oh, my name, my name is Leo Russo.
An address.
239 Belmont Street, Carbonell.
Cool.
Okay. Like I said, I'm in the local media, but I'm here today as a veteran. Like, hundreds of people in this area, you know, I fought overseas. I lost one friend to combat. I've lost 10 times that number at home to either overdoses or suicide. The veteran, the VA in Wilkes-Barre, and my last check doing a news story, they employ, and this isn't their fault, they employ two psychiatrists, okay? In Lackawanna and Luzerne Counties alone, you're talking 30,000 veterans, and that's not even factoring in the Susquehanna County feeds into there, Wayne County feeds into there, Monroe County feeds into there. The numbers are astronomical. If you wanted to, if you needed to see a psychiatrist, you have to be almost at the point of no return, you know? There's gaps that need to be filled. Now, I'm also with a group that fills those gaps. We're called Valhalla Veteran Services, and there are several veteran service agencies in this area that are operating mostly just on their own goodwill. My friend Eric there is our chief counselor. He has a space in a church that they gave to him because they saw the work that he was doing. I mean, he's pretty much traveling around giving veterans help for free. The president recently came down with an executive order that really touches on veteran suicide, and we've all heard the numbers of 22 a day. I'm here to tell you, this is happening in this area. The Armory in Scranton went through a run last year where they lost like six guys in six months, either to suicide or overdoses. My last two friends that died to overdoses were both state corrections officers, okay? So, we're not talking about, you know, the people that we traditionally think about maybe overdosing. So, the president's executive order empowers local activist groups like ours to do their mission. What we're asking the board for is to use your influence to push to have a local representative on that board. We're seeing the issue here in the Scranton area. I don't know how nationally they could be seeing more, and I'm telling you, it's right out of that new armory in Scranton. Eric has been a counselor in the military for 30 years, and then retired, and now he does this in his civilian life. I can't think of a better person to help shape a policy than him. So, I'm going to bring him up here. I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
That's a lot to live up to, what you just said, Leo. Thank you. So, I did serve for 30 years. I wasn't a counselor in the military. I was an NCO. In other words, that means I was just a guy doing a job. And Leo's right, actually, we lost five guys while we were over there from our battalion. Leo was with me at the same time, and I work with a lot of veterans in the area that are from specifically the 109th Infantry, the 55th Brigade, the 109th Field Artillery. I'm connected with all those folks. I've lost eight people. Eight, so when I say that, though, you need to understand that I'm only counting the ones that were important to me. I shouldn't say important to me. The ones that I knew personally, right? So, that number of 22 veterans a day, it doesn't mean much until you can recognize that there's eight faces to me that are important. And by the way, there's others in the area that are connected to even more. So, we have a serious problem. I can't honestly say that we have more of a problem or less of a problem than anywhere else in the United States, but it sure as heck feels like it's a pretty big problem. And so, my organization and other organizations that are in Lackawanna County are looking at these problems and trying to deal with them. I mean, there's organizations like Veterans Promise, Equines for Freedom, Valor, there's organizations throughout the county and beyond the county that are trying to deal with this problem. But here's the thing, there's a lot of people out there, you know, when we hear that number 22, people get all kind of weepy and sad, and it's, you know, it touches your heart, and it ought to. But having an emotional response to something is not the same as understanding the problem. And I've studied this problem for six years now, and I really believe, I mean, this is going to sound like an arrogant statement, but I really believe that I have an understanding of this that is perhaps deeper than a lot of people that are even at the doctoral level. I have a master's degree, but people that are smarter than me that at the doctoral level, I don't think they, I think they miss the mark. And so, what Leo is saying is absolutely correct. I want to be able to at least address that task force that the president has formed because I want to make sure that they are actually targeting the real problem. And the real problem isn't something that I can talk about in one minute up here at a podium. It just, it can't. But it has to do with the fact that the way that the military trains us, because when you talk about suicide, you know, a lot of people commit suicide, all right? Civilians and veterans both. It's not just a veteran problem, but there's a difference. When you're talking about double or triple or quadruple the number of veterans killing themselves as compared to, when you compare those numbers by hundred thousands, so one out of 100,000 veterans kill themselves, it's something like four out of 100, I'm sorry, 1 out of 100,000 civilians kill themselves. It's something like four veterans out of 100,000 kill themselves. That's quadruple, right? I'm not real good at math. That's a lot. So, there's a difference between the way a civilian thinks and the way that a veteran thinks, and it has, and that is the real problem that we deal with. And I don't think that that problem is looked at, because when you look at what people try to think about when they think about suicide, they're always looking at isolation and purposelessness, which is across the board, and those are part of the problem. But there's something else that's different about us veterans, and it has to do with the way that we have been trained, specifically about death and killing. And that doesn't mean, it doesn't mean you have to be a combat veteran, by the way, because there's a mindset change that happens when you're at basic training, when you internalize those values, and that's where the problem lies. That's the message that we have to get to the task force in order to begin to solve this problem. Now, when I say solve the problem, you're never going to solve suicide completely. It's an individual choice, but we can affect it. So, all we're really asking for is that you use your influence as a board to talk to the state, and we're talking to the state representatives, to the congressman that'll actually listen to us, to say, hey, we have some information you need. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to go a little bit out of order. Usually, we don't speak under opportunity for the public. We're, we always try to stay ahead of the curve. We're the first county that officially sued the opioid manufacturers because we knew that the pharmaceutical companies were lying to our family practitioners, and all of us, you know, we believe in our family practitioners. They're our doctor. It's our doctor, you know what I mean? So, what he says, if it's three a day, it's three a day, you know, if it's four a day, it's four a day. Problem was that three and four a day would cause an addiction, so that's why this Board of Commissioners made sure that we were suing those who were poisoning our community. And when it comes to veterans, we have a good, very good Veterans Affairs Officer, just a great job, Dave Isley. So, I'm going to ask Fran to maybe set up a meeting with all of us in a room to talk over what exactly would be the process and opportunity for us to have more of a voice, okay?
Yeah. I'm Ed Fodds from Dunmore, Pennsylvania. I'm with Eric and Leo. Currently, I'm the president of Valhalla Veteran Services. I am also vice president of Friends That Have Forgotten Northeast Wing. I've been working with veterans since 1985 with the Legion, VFW, NAMPETS, DAP, so on and so forth. A high percentage of Vietnam veterans are those who commit suicide. It's higher than some of the other eras. March 5th of this year, President Trump issued his executive order, it's called Prevent, the president's roadmap to empower veterans and end a national tragedy of suicide. He has ordered that many people, many high people, the Secretary of Defense, Secretary of Labor, Secretary of Health and Human Services, Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, Secretary of Energy, Secretary of Education, Secretary of Homeland Security, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, the Assistant to the President for National Security Affairs, and the Director of the Office of Science and Technology Policy. He's directed them all to form a task force within one year to deal with veteran suicide. It was mentioned by my friends that veterans have a higher percentage of suicide. With females, female veterans, it's four times the national rate of citizens. Something has to be done. We're asking that Eric be put on the board to help with this situation. Valhalla veterans have been working to help prevent this for a couple of years now. We've trained a couple hundred people, right, Eric, on the ASSIST program, which is Applied Suicide Intervention Skills Training. We train people to recognize symbols, their signals that a person has, make a drastic symbols, their signals that a person has, make that drastic change in their behavior, for one example. Um, it could be from being the average person to extreme pleasure, extreme happiness. It could be just the opposite. Uh, but we can pick up some of the signals. The people that we train can pick up these signals and get that person into a safe place. Now, we're not the ones that take care of the people. We recognize the signals and get them to a safe place that could be talking to a priest, a rabbi, a minister, uh, all the way to, uh, getting them into an institution to help. There are many things that we can do to pick up, to prevent this. As I said, Valhalla Veterans Services has been working with this for two years now. And when the president came out with this, uh, Prevent roadmap, we were thrilled. Uh, I have the entire thing here that he put out, and, uh, he has many comments also. If anybody needs it, I have it right here. Please, help us with our efforts to prevent suicide. It is an epidemic. As Eric referred, veterans especially, because of our training, we're not afraid of death. We're civilians, most civilians are afraid of death. They think two, three, four, five times before making that the final decision that ends their life. Veterans aren't like that. We may think once or twice, but it's no big deal to us, because we are trained to kill. We are trained about death and how to ignore death. Please, help us. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, I thought somebody was going up. Sorry.
Ministers Bob Bowles, Scranton. These are my three friends. They're fellow veterans. We've tried to work, Eric and all, Leo, and I'm a friend, member of the Friends That Have Forgotten. And what they do is way beyond anything you heard here today. But Pat, if you recall, and Eric, you were here when I brought Dr. Lindenfeld here. I had him before the VA. I had him at Geno Merly. He's one of the top guys in the country that helps us save one vet's life or one person's life. And we had that opportunity here. I asked for some kind of funding to fund his program in conjunction with my friends and fellow vets. I'm asking for that here now, because you just heard it from the heart. We got money for everything. We got money for bike studies. We got money for this. We got money for that. But we haven't put one bloody dime to what everybody's gone through. And we have a source. You heard them right here. I paid for them. I brought them here, because all their lives, including Joan, who was a veteran, whether you knew that or not.
Yeah, we did.
Okay? This is what made this country what it is today. That's what made that flag so great, are these people. And those that aren't here now, because we didn't help them. It's our responsibility. And I'm asking you now, as I did in the past, let's put some money on the table, and then maybe we'll get the government to chip in. When I said we were the first ones in this country to move forward with Lindenfeld, then we could set the program. We have the people. We have the resources. Let's just put them where they belong. And that's in the people who gave us this country. And that's on you guys. I just want you to know that. Okay? I couldn't be prouder to be part of you. Thank you. Now, get on to my own agenda. You know, we had Jimmy Reddington. He's not here, but how many vets aren't here? But Ed and Leo and Eric, they're gonna see that we keep some people around. I tried to do something with the church that I had there, and we just couldn't put the deal together. Maybe something we should sit and talk to now, where I was given that assessment by Joyce, who's your tax collector. Now, he's your solicitor. Kolacheski, the games they played, reassessing the church, because I once held it to a judge who had a deed already done and was backdooring everybody. I'm a person of principle, and I've been that way my whole life. It's never gonna change. But it may be the opportunity now to use that building with some proper funding to give them the place we need to try and do something. So, it's just out on the table today. And Pat, like you said, we could set up another meeting here where we could have more time to discuss this. I know time is always of a constraint.
Can I just say something real quick? Eric just got up to leave now because somebody called him, and he has to go counsel them. Like, somebody's having a crisis at this moment, and he's the guy that they called. That's why he just ran out of here right now. So, I mean, this is a- you saw it in real time.
That's what it's all about, and I'm glad they're here today, because you heard it firsthand. And we can do something about it. We need to do something about it, and we probably will do something about it. You know, we heard earlier about colon cancer. I'm gonna tell you a little story, and it's a true story. I've had the test. It's the most peaceful sleep I've ever had, okay? Because when you wake up, you say, "Are we ready yet?" And until you get the hell out of here, you're done. So, don't believe all the nonsense of prep and all this. But Judge Menora, there's a very close friend of mine, a priest, who was having symptoms, and I told him he had to go get checked, and he was refusing. Evidently, he didn't wanna go. I said, "You may be a man of God, but you got a physical problem right now, and God's not coming down here to take care of you today. You need to get checked." And he wouldn't go. So, I called Carmen. I said, "Judge, I need you to do me a favor. I need to give him a call." Judge Menora called him, and in that dialogue they had between them, "Father is alive today." That's how important it was, because they got a cancer early in his stage, and he's here today because of that. So, the importance of this, and I'm happy to speak out about it today. I'm happy that we have people in this county that put a life first. Don't be afraid of going and getting a colonoscopy. It's a hell of a lot better than being told you have cancer and you're not coming back. So, pay attention. It's reality. This past week, I've gone through a bunch of stuff, uh, with the New York Times. They misquoted me with their fake news, saying that basically the comments I made were all twisted. Well, I'm gonna set the record straight. I said President Trump was the greatest unifier when it comes to the elimination of racism in this country. And that Obama was and still is the greatest divider when it comes to racism. He's the creator of it, and he's the one that let it keep- continue. I'm proud to sit here and say that the president has done everything in his power. Of course, we have closed minds and those that don't wanna believe in what that flag stands for. But anybody come into this country, understand one thing. You're gonna live under our rules. We're not gonna change the way we live to set up to your rules. Because if you want your rules, then stay in your own country. And I could stand here and say with my friends that I'm proud to be a Trump supporter, but more importantly, I'm proud to be an American and have the freedom and right to be able to stand here today, as each and every one of us have, and thank all those that didn't come home or remained and sitting in hospitals without arms, legs, eyes, 'cause they fought to defend that flag. And that's what we forgot about. We have a Veterans Day, but people blow it up. They'd rather go worry about their marijuana and all their other stupid stuff than really understanding what this country's really about. And they're the ones tearing it apart, because we're allowing people to come here who wanna change it to their way of life, rather than the way of life we were brought up to believe in and our people fought to give us. I'm gonna ask again, and I'll bring it up at the prison board meeting, I'm asking for a motion finally to get pillows for the jail. I've heard stories, orders, bedbugs, this, that, and all that other nonsense. Gotta wash your bedding, and we all know bedbugs, just don't live in pillows. They live everywhere. So, I'm asking once and for all to give the inmates in Lackawanna County a damn pillow. I suffered through there, and I know a lot of other guys have, because we didn't have pillows. And when we get to the prison board meeting today, I'm gonna ask the warden to show you the mattress that we had to sleep on, and see if you guys would wanna sleep on it, or they would. During St. Patrick's Day Parade, Commissioner, uh, we had a trailer there. We had your picture, and I was honored to do that.
Thank you, Bill.
Well, a character in blue jeans, a green hoodie, and a cap. And I wanna thank him for looking into the cameras as he tore your picture off the trailer. The Scranton PD has that picture. But what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do something a little different. I want him to know we know who you are, and I know we could come looking for you. And he could run, but he's not gonna hide, because I'm not gonna allow it. But I'm gonna do something a little different today, 'cause I called him a pothead, because that's the only thing he can be, to be that ignorant to go to face somebody's property. And they're the been the only ones that have been against the commissioner. I'm gonna put up a $500 reward to any of his own people, his own pothead group, that were willing to turn him in, that he could be prosecuted. And they got 500 bucks to go buy their dope and have fun. That's an offer I'm putting on the table on social media and everywhere else. And Commissioner, you will be vindicated. Trust me. This character is not going away. He put your picture under his arm, and he knows I'm telling the truth. And he walked down the street to Penn Avenue, and he's on cameras. But he's ours. He's not yours. Okay? And it's just a shame that we have people that do this. One of the other things, Commissioners, I know you spent millions of dollars here. Get something to quiet the noise down. But the doors slamming and banging and everything else, get one of our geniuses in here to put some type of molding on there to deaden the sound. It'd be a heck of a nice thing around here, because everybody jumps like it's a shotgun going off. And, uh, last thing I do have is, again, with Joe Joyce, you need to make a decision once and for all to eliminate that position. You're setting yourself up for major, major liability. And you have a solicitor here. You have a couple attorneys here, and they will tell you it's a major conflict of interest that's going on. Joyce and Kolacheski created a major issue in my life and my companies by filing a personal bankrupt- uh, personal judgment on me against real estate when Commissioner Cummings stood up and said, "You can't do it." Unfortunately, you two guys let him get away with it. And he created millions of dollars in losses and problems, because I can't fund my corporations, because of his stupidity and arrogance between him and Kolacheski. And yet, you're letting that guy sit there, either give him one or the other job, but he shouldn't have two. It's a major conflict. Thank you.
Joan Hodawanitz, 101 Penn Avenue, Scranton. Well, I guess I'll put in my two cents as a veteran. I've been retired for twenty years, but I gotta tell you that the problems of veteran suicide are not new. I had a cousin who was only six weeks older than I was, and he joined the Army, and he got a heroin habit. Was administratively discharged, 'cause they couldn't help him in the Army. And he couldn't get help once he was discharged. And on October 31st, 1978, he killed himself. So, this is- they're not exaggerating. Okay? This goes back decades, and it's getting worse. And I've been retired twenty years, and I remember when I was in, 'cause I was in military intelligence. And you have the culture, which takes you starting in basic training and desensitizes you to killing. Uh, but you also have a- another side of that culture, which tells you you do not want to be perceived as weak. You don't wanna ask for help if you have any kind of emotional issues or mental problems. Certainly don't wanna admit to depression. If you are in military intelligence and you had any- any- any indication that you might have a mental issue or an emotional problem, you kissed your security clearance goodbye, and you could look forward to becoming a civilian earlier than you had planned. And that attitude has carried over when people get discharged, that they do not want to ask for help. They don't wanna be perceived as weak. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and I was com- commander four times, and a battalion commander, and a deputy brigade commander. And you would see this happen. Anybody that went to the local hospital, the Army Hospital, asked for help, their records were immediately flagged. It's not just military intelligence. I had an MP company of military police. You asked for help. You had any kind of issue. Couldn't carry a weapon, so you kissed your career goodbye. So, you know, we've got to relook the command climate, climate, and the culture that the military fosters, where, yes, we do need to defend our country, and we have to be skilled at doing it. But by the same token, we do not want a culture of loving death, being insensitive to it, and crucifying anybody for any reason. Maybe you're starting having a problem with alcohol. Maybe you're, you know, having a problem at home with your spouse. Maybe you can't stand your children, and you're afraid you might abuse them, you know, hit them or whatever, uh, where you cannot mention it, let alone ask for help, without permanently injuring your career. And that- that mentality carries over when you get discharged, okay? Because veterans can be very reluctant to ask for help. So, I support every effort that you are pursuing, and I congratulate you for taking the initiative. Okay, now, separate issue. In the last couple of weeks, you probably saw in the news that the city of Scranton finally has its preliminary study on stormwater management, a preliminary study, which was over two years in the making. And Mr. Bolzoni, who is the business administrator in Scranton, um, had a conversation with Jim Lockwood of the Times Tribune. And Mr. Bolzoni is in favor of a regional approach-
Sure he is.
-to stormwater management. In fact, the city has issued an RFP, and the bids are due on April 12th, which is also encouraging a regional approach to stormwater management. So, my question to you Commissioners is, has anyone from Scranton's administration approached you to discuss regional management of storm water?
I'll answer under Commissioners' permission.
Okay. I would be very interested. Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Please.
Okay.
One more.
Tracy.
On the, again, on the issue of veteran suicide, uh, if anybody questions anything that, uh, my experiences, um, I have held positions with veterans groups from secretary, uh, adjutant with the, uh, American Legion. I was American Legion Post Commander. I was Veterans of Vietnam War Post Commander, State Commander, and on the International Board of Directors for Veterans of Vietnam War Incorporated. I've held positions with other veteran organizations also. I served in the Air Force for four years, after serving one year with the Navy Reserve. While in the Air Force, after training, uh, electronics training, I worked with NASA under direction of the Air Force on the last five Gemini missions. Uh, after Apollo One had the unfortunate fire, I was sent to Otis Air Force Base in Massachusetts for more electronics training, subsequent assignment to Thailand. Uh, we worked on, uh, Secretary of Defense McNamara's electronic wall, and, uh, we had sensors and, uh, called in airstrikes on troop movements and convoys and so on and so forth. I was basically protected by the military as far as the news back here, what was going on with the protests and all of that during Vietnam. When I come back, I got discharged in California, and it was the rules of the military back then that you traveled in uniform even though you were discharged. Going through the airport in California on my way home, I was spit on. It didn't really bother me. I just thought the guy was a jerk, because I didn't understand the situation at the time. Had I understood it, I probably would have taken action against it. But years later, I realized what was going on, and I got upset. But, uh, I do have considerable experience working with veterans, and I just wanted everyone to know that I'm not just some guy off the street that doesn't know what he's doing. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other business.
Well, thank you all for your service, and thank you for coming in and bringing that to our attention. I greatly appreciate it. I know that Commissioner O'Malley will be right on it, because that's one of his big things, is with the veterans, he's always working with them, so I appreciate his work and the veterans, too. I would like to, again, thank my fellow commissioners for supporting me and my work at the Conservation Board. I do enjoy it, and I do, I do like to learn about new things, and I'm always trying to keep an open mind and see both sides of the issues, so that I can understand it better. And they've really, you know, enlightened me on areas, and I've actually enlightened them. So it's been a two-way street where we've learned from each other, and really grown to appreciate the work that each of us do and our perspective ideas. So I really am looking forward to working with them again for another, well, year or maybe four. We'll see. I also would, again, like to say congratulations to Virginia in Toronto, and to thank her for the work that she's done to make the grants that we're utilizing for workforce development more applicable to the title of the actual department that she heads up. And I am so appreciative of that, because we do have to be very careful what we're doing with taxpayer money, and I think she did an excellent job in revamping some of those programs, so that they actually are what they're meant to be, and help to provide workforce development for the community and for young children that possibly would be looking into those areas as adults. So I do appreciate the work she's doing, and look forward to going to see some of those programs that they initiate, because I'm very interested in how they work. And thanks, Mark, for zooming in on that video, because I think that was really important for the public, to see how she's changed some of the areas and done-- you know, she's doing a really good job. She's making it her own, so I'm really proud of her work there. And as far as stormwater drainage, I don't know about you two, but as far as me, if that ever comes before us, it's going to be a big fat no, in my opinion, because I'm not regionalizing anything. I would never be in favor of the county taking over anything. And nobody has approached me, if the, if The Times is wondering, and for the public, nobody has approached me from Scranton City Council to look into that. I did watch their meeting. Scranton has many problems, and I've seen the devastations at some of the residents. I've gotten, I've gone out to the homes of people who have, you know, suffered at the hands of rainwater drainage. I've met with PP&L, the Conservation Board has also gotten involved in it. I've brought them in and looked into the areas that Scranton is having problems with. The county has, you know, looked at things, trying to see if they would be able to help in any way, shape, or form, but there's nothing that is our area to fix. It's the city of Scranton. So, you know, that's the way I see it. It's their responsibility, and they need to just take care of it. As far as issues that I'm always tasked with bringing up, one of them is obviously marijuana issue, that I, I'm always looking at the opioid crisis, and, you know, thanks to the, my fellow commissioners, they've, you know, gone out and done some work to be able to get us to a place where we can sue the pharmaceutical companies, who basically lied to the public, to the doctors, and didn't do their long-term testing, and, you know, claimed that their medication wasn't as addictive at long-term measures as they originally thought, which can be the case for any drug, which is why it's so important to do the long-term studies on medications and drugs that come through America, which is important to do on marijuana as well, and that hasn't been done. But fortunately for us, other countries have, and we're learning more and more each day from other countries like, you know, the Middle East or overseas, and, you know, there are a lot of reports in the media today on, you know, how marijuana is supposedly so good for people, it doesn't harm anyone. That's, that's the narrative, it doesn't harm anyone. But they don't, they can't validate that. And I, however, can validate that it is not always good, because we do have some areas where we have proof now, since Colorado and California and England and all that have allowed this to happen in their areas. So I'm just going to go through a couple areas that, you know, we all know about and have been, have been seeing since legalization have occurred. So just real briefly, and these are areas that I'd be, you know, I'd share with the public. As a matter of fact, I think I'm going to go ahead and just make these flyers myself and pass them out, because, you know, I've been reporting on these deaths caused by marijuana for a while now, and nobody wants to report on them, so I just will hand them out to the public on, at my own cost, and I'll be my own paper. Marijuana-related deaths, and this is from Clear Alliance, has reporting on this. Children Learning Through Education Research has, has reported on this. It's www.clearalliance.org. Has marijuana caused or contributed to any deaths? Yes. After alcohol, marijuana is the most common substance involved in traffic fatalities. Marijuana also contributes to other preventable deaths. Examples are provided below. Accidental death in 2012, Ton Drouse, 26-year-old, returned home from a Colorado Rockies game and apparently lost his keys. He tried to reach his apartment balcony by climbing the outside of the building, but fell to his death. The autopsy ruled his death an accident in a level of THC. The ingredient in marijuana that causes intoxication in his blood was 27.3 nanograms. No other drugs or alcohol were in his system. 2012, Daniel Jerez, 18-year-old, a high school student. After smoking marijuana, Jerez reportedly became wild, stripped off his clothes, grabbed a knife, and stabbed himself repeatedly. The autopsy revealed 38.2 nanograms of THC in his blood at the time of his death. Tests for other drugs were negative. Jerez's death was listed as suicide with marijuana intoxication as a significant condition. Number three, 2014, Levi Thamba-Pongi, P-O-N-G-I, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right. 19-year-old, a Wyoming college student, visiting Colorado with friends, jumped to his death from a hotel balcony after eating a marijuana cookie. Pongi had a single slice of the cookie, but when he didn't feel anything, he ate the remainder of the cookie all at once. One cookie, folks, one cookie. He reportedly became agitated and erratic before jumping to his death. The Denver coroner listed marijuana intoxication as a significant condition contributing to his death. 2015, Luke Goodman, 22-year-old, a college graduate vacationing with family at Colorado's Keystone Resort, bought marijuana edible candies. He ate two of the peach candies, and when nothing happened, he ate some more. It is estimated he consumed four or five candies, pieces of candy, became agitated and incoherent. He retrieved a gun and shot himself. Toxicology results show Goodman had 3.1 nanograms of THC in his blood. Marijuana overdoses. Although overdosing on marijuana is very rare, coroners have documented deaths from cannabis toxicity and cannabis cardio-toxicity. 2013, Gemma Moss, 31-year-old, a mother of three from Britain, was found dead in her bedroom after smoking marijuana. Her death was reportedly caused by cannabis toxicity, and the coroner recorded the verdict of death as cannabis abuse. 2014, a coroner at Multon Coroner's Court ruled John O'Brien, 53-year-old from Salford, died from cannabis cardio-toxicity, a little-known condition, again, a little-known condition called cannabis cardio-toxicity, in which smoking marijuana triggers heart problems, which is very well-reported and should be being reported on, but isn't. Murder victim in 2014, Kristen Kirk, 44, a wife and mother of three sons from Denver, Colorado, called 911 and reported her husband, Richard Kirk, was acting erratically after eating marijuana candy and possibly from pain pills. While on the phone with the police, she, she was shot and killed by her husband while their three children were in the home. Mr. Kirk was charged with murder and has pled not guilty. Toxicology tests revealed the only substance found in Richard Kirk's blood was THC. That's just a few examples. Here's, here's another report, which I've been talking about, nobody wants to take on. Doctors debate whether baby died from marijuana overdose. You know, we saw what happens when you push up against the marijuana, the people that believe in marijuana. They come in, they attack, they, they don't let you speak. These doctors were so afraid of the backlash they got after they reported that a baby, an 11-month-old baby overdosed and died, that now they're saying, oh, well, I don't know, the only thing, we did every test, and the only thing we found was marijuana in the baby's blood, but we can't say for sure, because of all the pushback they got. First, it was, yes, the baby overdosed because they, they ate marijuana. Now, it's the only thing that it could have been, but they won't admit to it being it. That's how scared people are. Doctors afraid to do their job and report on this because of the backlash they got. ER visits for kids rise significantly after pot legalized in Colorado. The number of teenagers sent to emergency rooms more than quadrupled after marijuana was legalized in Colorado, mostly for mental health symptoms, research reported Thursday. They found 639 teenagers who went to one hospital in Colorado in 2015, either had cannabis in their urine or told a doctor they'd had been using cannabis. That's up from 146 in 2005, before the use of marijuana was legalized in Colorado. The state-level effect of marijuana legalization on adolescents' use has only begun to be evaluated. I mean, this, this is ridiculous, what's, what's not being reported. Marijuana users risk schizophrenia. They found 3,443 ER visits by 13- to 21-year-olds to six ERs and urgent care centers over that time. Two-thirds involve psychiatric symptoms. More than half also had evidence of other drugs, including alcohol, amphetamines, and cocaine. Federal study published late last year found 6% of high school seniors are using marijuana We just had an article in our paper, "State Lets Women Use Cannabis But Her Employer Found Out and Fired Her," lawsuit claims. This is yet another issue that's going to come up, not only for, you know, us at the county level, but government workers. Are we going to allow our government workers to use marijuana while they're at work? Or are they going to get reprimanded? This lady's suing because she got fired for being on drugs during work. And she got fired. Well, of course, she was going to get fired. Are we going to change the laws and let people be intoxicated now on either alcohol or marijuana while they're flying a plane, driving a truck, taking care of a patient, doing surgery? Southeast Missourian had an article that just came out, "The Risks of Marijuana." Hillsdale College impetus-published Alex Brennan's article, "Marijuana, Mental Illness and Violence." I have it here for anybody that's interested in seeing it. Please feel free to call me, I'll send, I'll send you the information. In it, he tells how he discovers that all of the 300 patients in the Mid-Hudson Forensic Psychiatric Institute, a New York State hospital for the criminally-mentally ill, smoked marijuana. Berensen is a business reporter for the Denver Post, with degrees from Yale in History and Economics. He wrote for 11 years for the New York Times and has authored 12 books. His most recent nonfiction book is "Tell Your Children the Truth About Marijuana, Mental Illness, and Violence." His wife Jackie Berensen was, was, until recently, the senior psychiatrist at the institute. She discovered that all 300 patients were invariably lifelong marijuana smokers. Many of these patients are killers and arsonists, and there is at least one cannibal. All have major psychiatric disorders, the most common being schizophrenia, that provoke them to violence. For the previously liberal-leaning Berensen regarding drugs, the connection between marijuana and schizophrenia was a shocker. Challenged by his spouse, he researched the world's scientific literature and found a huge gap between the claims made by those who would profit, including politicians through tariffs and taxes, and the actual truth of scientific literature. After exhaustive research, he concludes that almost everything you think you know about the health effects of cannabis, almost everything advocates in the media told you for a generation, is wrong. Facts, one, THC has been shown to work on a few narrow conditions. For pain relief, ibuprofen is far superior. Two, Rob Campy, a co-founder of Marijuana Policy Project, admits that they have always viewed medical marijuana laws primarily as a way to protect recreational users. Three, recent studies debunk marijuana as a substitute for opioids. In the West, where there is the most cannabis use, there is also the worst problem with opioids. Four, marijuana use consistently leads to other drug use. People using marijuana for three years were three times more likely to use opiates than non-users. Five, most importantly, not only does marijuana not help depression, anxiety, a mountain of material indicates it worsens severe mental illness, and are three times more likely to develop schizophrenia. Regarding violence, the first four states to legalize recreational marijuana, Colorado and Washington in 2014, Alaska and Oregon in 2015, corporately had 450 murders and 30,300 aggravated assaults in 2013. Last year, they had 620 murders and 38,000 aggravated assaults. This is an increase of 37% for murders. 37% increase in murders and 25% for assaults, far greater than the national average, even when accounting for population growth. Child abuse and neglect is more common in marijuana users than in cocaine, methamphetamine, and opioids combined. Missouri passed a law legalizing medical marijuana despite the very limited indications. But as their advocates admit, this is a means of protecting the recreational user. Just as we have recognized alcohol as a danger to driving and cigarettes as a risk to lung cancer, we need to educate our youth regarding the risks of marijuana in this free society. We need to separate the true scientifically-based facts from the politically and financially-motivated propaganda. Richard Martin is a physician who rides an ape Gerardo. That's who wrote this. There's another, another article, "Don't Be Fooled By Marijuana Legalization Is Not About Advancing Social Justice." You know, this is yet another area that they claim exists, that we're trying to help the poor. But in this article, it says, "The aim of these candidates is misguided. Legalizing marijuana will only further undermine poor communities and foster addiction. It is time for progressives to choose between social justice and legalizing marijuana. Proponents of legalization are correct to point out the racial and socioeconomic discrepancies in enforcement of marijuana arrests." And yet, that is an argument for decriminalization or changing policing tactics, not for legalization. In fact, statistics collected from states that have already legalized marijuana disprove, they disprove the beliefs of those who think legalization is a cause celebrateur for social injustice. And it goes on and on and on, in regards to the actual facts that exist out there. So I will be able to provide this to anyone as well. "Don't Be Fooled, Marijuana Legalization Is Not About Advancing Social Justice," by Alex Titus, Fox News. It is an opinion article, but it's got actual facts that, and points that are given on the back, that you can actually look up and research on your own to find out if it's an accurate statement or not. I would implore people in our community to call your state legislatures and tell them that until more information is revealed about marijuana, be it recreational or medical. Now, I understand medical is already a fact of life here, but we don't have the ability to opt out, which we should have been given, like Colorado was given. But before that's done, we have veterans here who are talking about how their increased suicide has gone up. Mental illness is a proven fact, and people are literally jumping off buildings after eating candy that's, it's with marijuana. It's proven. It's not, it's not something I'm making up out of, out of the, you know, air. These are facts. This is actually things that happened in Colorado and throughout countries that have used it. I have the facts right here. They aren't my facts, they're reported facts. So it's not what I'm saying, I just read it to you. It's not my words, it's what I read from reports that have actually been given from these states. So they can't twist my words, because they're going to have to twist the words of the actual reports that were written by these states. So what you've been hearing about marijuana and how safe it is, is not true. The marijuana we have today is much more stronger than it was back in the 70s or 80s, 20% to 30% stronger, in fact. So it's causing a lot of problems for us, and I would implore you to please get in touch with your state representatives and tell them that it is a bad idea to vote for recreational marijuana, very bad idea. And why in God's name, we've got alcohol, we've got tobacco, we've got the opioid crisis, and now we want to introduce yet another, another drug into society that could potentially harm our children and cause them to have psychiatric disorders and possibly schizophrenia, or worse, suicide? I'm sorry, I just think that we need to look a lot further into this and start waking up to the fact that this is not a good idea. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Commissioner O'Toole, any?
As far as the stormwater issue, I would like to talk to the city before coming to a decision on that. I think it's very important. And it is an issue. As far as the veterans concerned, I'm sure Chief Pantuso will set up a meeting with the Board of Commissioners, and will certainly talk with you again about this, and it is obviously a serious problem. Thank you.
Joan, the city has not reached out to us. The way that it's been mentioned to us, it's actually responsibility of each municipality, that's the way it is, but no one has reached out to us thus far. The veterans, I already let you know that we're going to try to figure out something between Veterans Affairs, and we'll get some sort of meeting set up within the next week or two. Fran will-- Fran will, our chief of staff, will take care of that. I would just like to announce that we're gonna be having our Easter egg hunt, and that's gonna be, it's a first annual event, and that's gonna be at McDade Park, Saturday 11th, and the registration is at, pre-registration is at 11:00 AM. And if you have any questions, it's 963-6764. And April 1st is gonna be the first day for Lackawanna County Mine Tour to be opened, so any schools, anyone out there that would like to reserve time to go down in the mine and actually see the living history, Continental Mine that opened in 1860 and closed in the early 1960s, late 1950s. Actual mine, provided employment to numerous citizens throughout Lackawanna County, and you can go down and see the mine and really have a feel for what our grandfathers and great-grandfathers and great-grandparents went through, and how tough it was, and that it was a job that was very hellish and horrible. And that's all I have. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.